If you look at our presentation, nobody's noticed. The public vision, this is Ann Arbor.
Similar.
We were gonna put, we should have that extra. But you know, we can notice we just added it out. Just to make it clear now. If we had this line up, we would have done that. Yeah. Yeah, we don't want kind of hard. Wait, you don't move anything. Yeah. You don't think it's scary.
How are you?
Good.
Hello crew here, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
Good afternoon still. It's 5:00 afternoon or evening?
Hi, hi. Hey, Vernita. How are you? Good. She's hiding. I wish I had water, so. We actually got a young group this time. We used to see an old people out there.
Good afternoon. Can we open the curtains? I hope it's kind of dark in here.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, do I have it behind you too?
Vernita DuVall. To my far right is Vern Gustafson, our planner. And then Tim Shepherd, Mona Parlov, and then I'm Ashley Fegley. Roll call, please.
Uh, yes. Uh, we got Chair Fegley.
Present.
Vice Chair Parlov.
Present.
Commissioner DuVall. Commissioner Shepherd.
Present.
And I'd like to excuse Commissioner Northcross. He did indicate he would be absent tonight.
Okay.
And Commissioner McGinnis is walking in as we speak.
Welcome. Okay. I don't believe there are any amendments or changes to the agenda.
Yes, I have one agenda item I'd like to add. At 7.2, I would ask, as an item would be to schedule a special meeting on May 23rd. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to add 7.2 to the agenda?
I make a motion to add 7.2 to the agenda.
May I have a second?
Support.
Roll call.
Commissioner Parlov.
Yes, to amend.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to amend.
Commissioner DuVall.
Yes, to amend.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes, to amend.
And Chair Fegley.
Yes, to amend.
Okay, motion passes to amend the agenda.
Okay, next on the agenda is meetings per review. Um, we don't have them printed in front of us. Were they emailed to me, to us?
Uh, they were.
Okay. All right. Commissioner DuVall, do you have any changes or comments on the minutes?
Not at this time.
Okay. Commissioner McGinnis, do you have any comments or changes to the minutes?
No.
Commissioner Shepherd?
No comment, no changes.
Commissioner Parlov?
I do not.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for April 6, 2022?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 6, 2022.
Second.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Parlov.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes.
Chair Fegley.
Yes.
Commissioner DuVall.
Yes, to approve.
And Commissioner Shepherd.
Yes, to approve.
Okay. Minutes approved.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is special presentations. MSU practicum, West Huron Corridor.
Yeah. I'll give a brief introduction. I would like to introduce a, members of a team of eight. Only three could not be here tonight, but I had the privilege of working with this incredible team since like, say, mid-January until this past week when they finished up their plan and presented their final document and also presentation last week at Michigan State University. And I would say that it was a very, it was a pleasure of working with them because what they did was, we kind of created this consultant team of myself as, say, the owner and them being the team. And what they did was they carved out, based upon their expertise and knowledge, we had the ability of, we had a project manager you'll hear today, plus others in regards to, one, taking the reins, so to speak, as relates to socioeconomic analysis, a market analyst, we had a planner, we had an urban designer involved, we had a transportation specialist, and also a building analyst. So it was this great team of, this consultant team that was able to put this whole final plan document that I feel very strongly about. As a matter of fact, I just received the poster here this evening, which we'll put up proudly in City Hall along with the document, which you also have a digital copy that you might have had a chance to review some parts of it. So looking forward to it. I'd like to turn it over to Quinton Hay to pick us off.
Hi, everyone. My name is Quinton Hay.
My name's Dan Seah.
I'm Michael Maxim. We've got Joey Emery and Michael Cardy on that side.
So we are the Pontiac West Huron Corridor study going Main Street. First, we'd like to thank the city of Pontiac as well as our, as well as Vern Gustafson for helping in creating this report. So on the left you can see is Oakland County situated in the state of Michigan. Through the middle is our corridor, which is as it's situated within the city of Pontiac. And finally, on the right, you can see our 1.5-mile stretch of West Huron located in between Telegraph and Woodward. The purpose of our report was to beautify the West Huron Corridor and transition it into a Main Street destination within Oakland County. The practicum team analyzed market information to create a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats analysis. This allowed us to create meaningful recommendations, and we hope that our recommendations will be able to be used as a roadmap for the corridor to improve beautification and development. So to begin, we looked to understand the current characteristics and conditions within the corridor that led us to create a socioeconomic profile, a windshield survey, commercial market analysis, zoning analysis, and transportation and infrastructure analysis. This, these analyses led us to create the short and long-term recommendations. So to begin for the overview of the socioeconomic profile, as opposed to the city of Pontiac and Oakland County, which saw increases in population from 2010 to 2020, our study area saw a notable decrease of 8.5% within the same timeframe. Excuse me. And then moving into the employment by industry, educational services, healthcare, and social assistance was the largest employing industry within the study area with 30% in 2010 and 20% in 2019. In the same time period, manufacturing saw the largest increase with an increase of 75%. And the largest decrease was seen in wholesale trade, which may be due to General Motors moving their global propulsion system center from Pontiac, Michigan to Warren, Michigan. Next, I'll pass it to Michael to talk about the zoning analysis.
For this slide, on the left-hand side, we see the current zoning for the corridor. And then on the right side is a future land use map for the West Huron Corridor. The practicum team then conducted a windshield survey. We analyzed 46 buildings along the corridor based on a set of criteria. We used this criteria to rank the buildings 1 to 4, with 4 being structurally good and 1 being structurally deficient. Here's an example of structurally deficient, structurally poor, structurally fair building, and structurally good building. Then the practicum took the scores and we created this map with each dot showing the individual buildings along the corridor with the dark green representing a 4 and then a red representing a 1. And then we took the median score of each block, and that is represented by the diamonds. The overall corridor score was a 3.35, meaning that the corridor was good to, in good-to-fair condition.
So I'm Joey, and I'll be talking about the commercial market analysis. So in order to do our commercial market analysis, we broke down the corridor into 1, 3, and 5-mile radii from the center of the corridor. So we looked at some important data, and one thing that stuck out was the employee summary in the 1-mile radius. You can see that healthcare and social assistance and public administration make up about 2/3 of the employment force in the corridor. And this can be largely attributed to the 2 hospitals and the city government located right here. Next, we look at our leakage surplus factor analysis from the 3- to 5-mile radius. And to explain leakage surplus factor real quick, that's where, if an industry is in leakage, there is not as much supply as there is demand for an industry in an area. So people are going outside of that area to satisfy the consumer need. And if it's in surplus, that means that there is not, there is not enough demand in that area for the amount of businesses that provide that certain good. So looking at the 3- to 5-mile radius, we can see that food and beverage stores has the most leakage, which is a key type of industry in this community. And I think that, we think that capturing that leakage would be very beneficial looking forward for commercial redevelopment. So I'm going to hand it over to Dan for transportation.
Thank you. So as, I'm sure you know, the West Huron Corridor is a Michigan, is under the jurisdiction of Michigan Department of Transportation. So they do maintain count stations along the corridor. Right here, the location, the two cross, pinpoints are where their count stations are located, and they take counts every few years and then use those counts to create a general average annual daily traffic, or just get an idea of, on average, how many vehicles use the corridor each day. And so on the west end of the corridor, near Telegraph, that number is, in 2019, prior to the pandemic, ranged between 25,000 and 26,000. And on the east end of the corridor, it was busier at 33,000. So this would, in general, be, the average, you would definitely view this as a fairly busy corridor. So there's a lot of traffic on this corridor. All of these numbers are prior to the pandemic, so they have come down a little since then. Of course, where's traffic going to go moving forward? Are we going to return to numbers, or is there going to be a permit decrease? That's still a question up in the air. Next. We also, hey, here, also did, performed some crash analysis on the corridor, used SEMCOG data to just collect the locations of crashes and also severity. And so on this slide, each letter represents either a pedestrian or bike crash. Bike crashes are represented by the underlined letters, and then the letters themselves represent the severity level, F being fatal, and then A being most serious, C being least serious. So we do see where there are some concentrations of pedestrian crashes on the corridor, typically near Johnson, around right where the hospital is, and then also on the west side of the Capitol, or the west side of the corridor, near Genesee and Waldo Streets. And then also did some analysis on some of the streetscape elements along the corridor. One of these that we looked at was lighting. Lighting is very important due to, helps people feel safe and be safe along the corridor due to helping with, aiding with visibility. And then it also attributes to the aesthetic value of the corridor, the type of lighting. And so we do see pretty consistent lighting throughout the corridor, although there are 3 gaps that I identified from the analysis. And then also the type of lighting, it's typical for what you would see on most Michigan highway corridors, kind of a tall gray street lamp, points out towards the road. But generally, within Main Street areas, you'd see something a little bit more aesthetically, one closer and more pedestrian-oriented, with lighting being closer to the street and also being more dense along the corridor.
So I'm gonna, so with the analysis that we have done, we were able to create strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and analysis for the corridor. So some strengths that we identified was that it was a half, heavy traffic area with close, being in close proximity to downtown, as well as the anchor employers of Lee Industries and the 2 hospitals. Some weaknesses that we identified were the unsafe nature for pedestrians and cyclists, as well as the lack of public transit and the lack of diversity in retail. Some opportunities we identified were opportunities to improve transportation and streetscape elements, as well as room for commercial market growth and cleanup efforts. And then some threats that we identified were the high expense to the local community, the declining population, and some blighted exteriors of buildings along the corridor. Next, I'll hand it into Joey to talk about some of the recommendations.
Okay, so going on to our first recommendations, we're looking at commercial redevelopment. And our short-term recommendation would be to establish a corridor improvement authority. So this would involve recruiting and nominating key stakeholders, as well as promoting incentives for new businesses, and it would serve to guide the vision of improvement for the corridor. So another short-term recommendation for commercial redevelopment is to establish a community outreach plan. And this would involve listening to residents' suggestions, creating a visionary master plan, and redeveloping blighted properties once that plan has been implemented. So our long-term recommendation for commercial redevelopment is to promote programs that will incentivize investment to address blight and vacant buildings and beautify the open space of the corridor. So on our left here in the picture, we can see an example of a blighted building on the corridor that I think was given a 2 on the scale. And on our right, we can see an example of a renovating building with similar dimensions, but looks much more aesthetically pleasing to the outside. Okay, so looking at a build-out feasibility study is another one of our recommendations for the long term. And this would involve looking at spots of the corridor that would be ideal for infill development and redeveloping buildings that are currently vacant. So as you can see on the left, there's a picture from the corridor with an open space where there's potential for infill development. And on the right is just kind of an example of what city street looks like when different buildings are incorporated after infilling. And then a recommendation for code enforcement would be to increase the budget and number of employees serving in code enforcement to better address the blight and cleanup efforts across the community. So yes, like, as I mentioned, increasing employee force, increasing the budget. And then the most important one would be the strict enforcement of the cleanup efforts, I think. And then short-term recommendation, which, while preparing to hire more of these code enforcement officials, would be to establish volunteer programs to take care of the cleanup efforts that need to immediately be addressed. So this would involve recruiting those volunteers and having them take part in maintaining the corridor, and it would help build pride in the community that members of the community are doing the volunteering themselves. Okay, so now I'm going to pass it back to Dan for streetscape recommendations.
All right, we do have several short-term recommendations regarding where to take the streetscape. And the first one was allocating and seeking funding for redesigning the streetscape to add infrastructure for pedestrian and bicyclists along the corridor. And so potential outside sources of this funding could, there are several MDOT sources that are specifically geared towards bicycle and pedestrians, such as the Transportation Alternatives Program. There's also anything, any type of program or improvement related to job creation along the corridor, such as commercial development. Could, there's Michigan Economic Development Funds that are also authorized by the Michigan Department of Transportation. They also have a state infrastructure bank where, where a municipality can take loans from, loans up to $2 million to improve this, to improve these, this infrastructure as well. We're also recommending to ensure, just that building setbacks along the corridor, especially in commercial areas, are set back enough to allow for potentially widening of sidewalks and creating that front, frontage space that adds character to a street. And we're also working, recommend to work with MDOT to perform a traffic study along the corridor to really ascertain if the third westbound lane is still necessary, and if not, add buffered bike lanes to redesign the road, add buffered bike lanes to add, to improve the bicycle transportation along the corridor, and also to add crosswalks at strategic points. And so this is an example of future streetscape, of what this could look like. On the left side, where you have the frontage zone, a wider sidewalk, between the sidewalk and the curb, that's where we're adding street furniture, adding bicycle parking, and also a in dimension, the width dimensions of the actual curb-to-curb dimensions, the width of the lanes, and the potential bike lanes that could be added to the corridor. And then this is an example of a corridor from Ann Arbor. It's a very, it's similar in traffic level, and this is the design of the corridor. They have bike lanes. These are some of the crosswalks they have, where there's median protection in the crosswalk, bright signs, there's flashing beacons as well. And we do see an example of the pedestrian-scale lighting that's more dense and provides improved aesthetic value to the corridor as well. And then this is an example of kind of the existing streetscape, and then a rendering from a very similar project that was conducted for the Michigan Avenue Corridor in Lansing, where we see kind of a pedestrian eye view of those bike lanes, added street trees or added lighting to the corridor, as well as those wider sidewalks with frontage zone and more pedestrian spaces on the right side. And then these are some suggested locations for crosswalks along the corridor as well. These are based on where there was those concentrations of pedestrian accidents, and also where there's transit locations and commercial locations, where there's likely to be more commercial, more pedestrian activity. And then once, there's also suggested location for a new traffic light at the Waldo and Chippewa intersection. And then as well, one additional recommendation is to add bicycle parking at strategic points along the corridor. On the left is an image from East Lansing about this, the placement of this parking between the curb and the, in the walking area. And then in the middle is a potential idea, this is one where you could add an element of placemaking to the corridor, where you add a kind of uniquely designed bike parking. And potential funding for this could come from the League of Michigan Bicyclists. They have a micro grant for anything bicycle-related, that's anywhere from $200 to $2,000, where bike parking would be a project that they would, would, like, that fits into their MO for the type of program they're looking to fund. And then as well, the last recommendation is, for short-term recommendations, is to identify locations that can be utilized as public parking along the corridor. And so right now, there's, specifically this, the picture on the left is near Dwight Road. And what you'll see is here is you have kind of this design where you see a business, then parking, then business, then parking. And so from an urban design element, that cuts into the streetscape, which in a sense lowers the walkability and attractiveness of the corridor, but it also creates issues for motorists and pedestrians because of the number of driveways that are directly exiting onto a very busy street. That's a big safety hazard, both for motors and for pedestrians. And so identifying locations such as this near your traffic light to add public parking areas, and then being able to infill those areas where there is currently parking along the corridor, and adding more commercial establishments there as well. And then another idea, another idea as well, is to use these parking areas as, to implement others placemaking, other placemaking improvement strategies as improving art, adding street art in places where there are, is public parking, like this example from Lansing. And then that's it. This is the, our, the poster that we have as well. We just wanted to thank Vern again for, for working with us, and we can open that up to questions.
Thank you very much for all your hard work. I appreciate you putting all these different metrics together and give us a cohesive idea of that corridor. I'm going to hand it off to Commissioner DuVall, if she has any comments or questions.
Good afternoon. Just so you know, I'm the current president of Main Street Pontiac, and so we heard about this, and it's a welcomed addition. It's a huge undertaking, so I'm going to be expecting big things from you guys.
Fantastic. So it's, it's good to hear from you. Thank you.
Commissioner McGinnis?
Thank you very much for your presentation and the research that went into it. The recommendation of a stoplight at Waldo and Chippewa, can you share, was it about pedestrian safety incidents or traffic? What are some other considerations that goes into that recommendation?
So, yeah, a couple, there is multiple. One, there was some pedestrian, there was a collection of pedestrian accidents at that quarter, so that was certainly one recommendation. And then also, there is, also one of the considerations was parking as well. Behind some of the, behind some of the, the commercial areas on that block, there is a parking area. And so, and so adding a traffic light there could also help to improve accessing those parking areas as well, being, basically being, allowing a motorist to more easily access that area of the corridor by being able to have a controlled left-in, left-out location where, especially during peak hours, it would be very, it would be a struggle to make those type of turns. And there's constant, another, another item we spotted from the crash analysis is there's a lot of left-turn crashes on that side of the corridor. So adding left turns, left-turn signals can particularly help protect, adding traffic, or adding traffic lights can particularly protect in that specific area as well.
As you might have seen anecdotally or in your research, that M24 Telegraph Road, there have been a great deal of pedestrian accidents, including fatalities. And so the state of Michigan has introduced some island or traffic calming measures. So it isn't without precedence, but I was curious if your research has shown anything in terms of number of vehicular crashes, or really the way in which traffic, which is used to a certain flow, a certain configuration, if there are any incidents where they are crashing into those islands or literally plowing through them, if there's anything in your research in other cities that you've come across?
Anecdotally, I don't have, specifically when it comes to those pedestrian crossings, I don't, I do know from articles, I have read some articles on the, on the subject, and there is minor cases of, especially when there are raised elements. Specifically, I'm thinking of, the one that comes to mind is when you see kind of those, trying to think, pylons that are put up for bicycle protection, a lot of those being sideswiped by vehicles, especially if they're in turning areas. But in general, I haven't, anecdotally, no, I don't have anything more on those pedestrian crossings specifically.
As the city Pontiac's planning team might have shared with you through this process, that this is the first corridor that's getting a deep dive, but it won't be the last, because there are many corridors in our city that are needing of these assessments, the attention, the infrastructure, the investments, and they have a strong multiplier effect for our neighborhoods. Are there other cities that, maybe other cohorts through your institution or through your research, some helpful examples for us to look at? You, you identified Ann Arbor and Lansing, and maybe East Lansing as well. Are there other areas in your research? Are there other areas in your research that you'd like us to look to as case studies as well, when it comes to what's possible with the corridor that has a lot of history, has a lot of aged structures or aged sort of configuration that we want to make work well going well into the 21st century?
Yeah, so in our past, there have been two similar, similar projects that, one was Saginaw Highway in the south of Flint, that I also took a similar look at a corridor that might be similar in some ways to, to this, and basically it structured the amount of traffic it has, the type of commercial activity that currently exists on the corridor. There's one in South Lansing as well, along Cedar Street. And so those are items that are actually within MSU's, kind of like our, our repertoire of work that we've done, so we could direct you towards those. One specific project that comes to mind to me as well is Rio Town in Lansing, where it was a Main Street commercial corridor that had a lot of vacancies about 10 years ago, where there has been a lot of investments, and it's a historic corridor where there saw decline due to reductions in the automobile industry. But in the last 10 years, it's made a, it's experienced a lot of business growth. And there's actually several businesses that have been found in the last 10 years that are now actually expanding across Lansing and adding to locations because of the success they found in that area. So that's, that's an example of another corridor in Lansing as well.
I love the engagement of public art from various different formats that are in that particular area. My final question is, where are each of you gentlemen from, what's your hometown, and what was the part of the Huron Corridor that brought you the most joy?
I've got the mic, so I can start. I am from Alpena, Michigan, but I've been in Lansing for close to 10 years now. I'm finishing up my master's right now in urban planning at MSU. And then really for me, my background is all transportation. And so that, just looking at the transportation elements, being able to dig into the, the data and the crash data, especially for how thorough SimCog's data is along the corridor for the types of crashes, that's something I really didn't get to, just for time, time's sake, I could have had an entire presentation on that, but it is something that I do delve into the report, so that's something that I was particularly excited about. Thanks for the question, too.
Yeah, I'm Quinton. I'm, I was born and raised in Lansing. So I was, been taking a lot of urban planning classes, and this was the first time I got to really exercise some practical knowledge, so that was very nice and enjoyable.
I'm from Gross Point, Michigan. I thought, I think the diversity along the corridor, I thought was really cool, so.
Hi, I'm Joey Emery. I'm from Lansing, Michigan. Something I really was interested in this quarter was the walkability of it, or at least the improvements that could be made to the walkability and pedestrian, and just overall non-motorized activity along the corridor. There's a lot of sidewalks that are pretty inconsistent with how wide they are, how far they're set back from the street. And there's just, overall could use some improvements in that aspect to better invite people to utilize that part of the city.
Hi, I'm Michael. I'm from Lake Orion, so I've driven up that corridor a lot. I used to work off Telegraph, and so it was interesting to see the crash analysis, because I would get stuck out there in the traffic. And then my background is construction management, so it is kind of exciting to see the potential of the corridor, and see if maybe one day I'll be able to work on a building out there.
Thank you. Commissioner Shepard, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments, just thank you for what you guys did. Great. I like the bike lanes, by the way, I think that's a great idea. Get rid of the third lane. That's all.
Mr. Carril?
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming to Pontiac and for putting fresh eyeballs on a project that needs to have fresh eyeballs addressing it. And I appreciate Mike's question about where are you all from, and we've got you from all over the state, so that's also really interesting to hear. The one project that I've been on multiple times because of what I do, I'm always out on the road driving, but 14 Mile Road in Claussen, are any of you familiar with how that has been transitioned? That is pretty fascinating, because it's such a busy road, it's a mile road, but they've done so much to slow the traffic down and really make it more of a welcoming environment, not only for the residents, but also people that are traveling through there. And also John R. in Hazel Park, where they've really transformed that as well. And, and what's that?
We're in the middle of it now.
Oh, okay.
Now the business is along the way, this road diet, bike lanes, traffic lights, I mean, we just had a fatality. I mean, everything they pitched here was like the exact same issues, and they're definitely going in the right direction.
Mm-hmm. So is, with that being said, we can't quite see those slides, because there's also these partitions that have glare on them. But one of the suggestions was to narrow the road and add wider paths for travel for bikes and pedestrians, is that right?
Do you could probably go back to that slide? Four or five back.
I believe that that was a possibility. If it was determined that we could get rid of the westbound
Correct.
...traffic lane of one of them, that we could have the ability to reconfigure as to a cross-section that's kind of illustrated.
Okay. It definitely would make a big difference. I have, with several neighborhood volunteers, I live near that whole corridor, and several volunteers and I have picked up litter along that corridor many years in a row. So I've had firsthand opportunity to see these businesses up close and personal, and some of them are pretty sad. So what you're proposing is certainly a great step in the right direction, but how do we know it's going to happen? We talk about these things all the time, and if Christopher Northcross were here, he worked on the master plan with us, and when we revised it a couple of years back. And the question that kept coming up was, well, we have all these ideas the neighbors would input, but how do we know that it's going to go from just a conversation to implementation as opposed to a conversation, and then it gets put in the book and it goes on the shelf, and then we look at it again 10 years from now and say, oh, wow, that was really a great idea, we should have done that? Do you guys have any input on any of that? What are your thoughts?
Yeah. So the first thing that came to mind specifically, especially when it comes to the street, I mean, that being, that being my area is, just from, from what I've seen, it does sound like, actually, one of the things that made me, because this was my, when it came to our list of projects, this is the one I picked for, for my first choice, and that was because of the work MDOT was doing on, in, looking at doing in the Woodward Loop, because that article came out, I think, like two or three days in the, in the free press before we selected these projects. And then they also mentioned that they want to look at the, at West Huron M59 Corridor as well. And so, yeah, that, those are still words at this point, but that's something to be encouraged with. But I think something that's maybe more under your control would be, and this is something that our professor, Zenet, told, recommended that we include, was to include those ideas for smaller projects that you can get started on within the next year or less. And so that could include those, some of those cleanup ideas. And I think one thing that I, I put in there specifically from the placemaking element was looking at bicycle parking, because to my knowledge, there wasn't any bicycle parking along the corridor, though there is a park there. So that could be one specific location you could look at. And that is, would be a low-cost thing that could happen, it's something you could include the community on, and with some of those bike parking ideas, creating, that's, something you can be unique with, it doesn't just have to be a U-shaped bike parking, like you could have some form of design that really represents the City of Pontiac or the West Huron Corridor, that it, it becomes a placemaking item within itself and not just a bicycle parking spot. So small projects like that, that you can start on would be, would, would I recommend is like, that first step you can take to make sure it just, doesn't just stay on the shelf.
Great. Thank you for that. That makes good.
And if I, if I may interject also, and, and knowing, and working with them in regards to plan as a draft plan, actually, one of my code enforcement officers is working right now to get individuals that might need some, to do some community service because of what, in their lives of, because of the district court and, and what they have to do. And so is kind of working with that judge to actually go out there and start cleaning up this corridor in regards to litter and debris and so forth. So I, I, you know, it's, it is short-term, but it's a real-life recommendation that we've already seen and we're trying to implement. Yeah.
Excellent.
It's, it's a small step, but it's a step in the right direction.
Mm-hmm. I agree. Great. That's all I have. Thank you for your hard work, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much for everything. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Good job, guys. Okay, next on the agenda is, yeah, public hearing 6.1 ZMA 22-01, conditional zoning
All right. Good evening, and everyone in attendance. The case we have today is zoning map amendment 2022-03. This is for the property 108118 West Lawrence. It is a conditional zoning map amendment, currently zoned C3 corridor commercial, proposed conditional M1 light manufacturing district, conditioned for medical marijuana grower and processing uses. So for your reference...
If I may, if I can just interject real quick. During our orientation, we talked about rezonings and so forth, and for members of newly appointed members, this is what we refer to as conditional rezoning, which is allowed under our zoning ordinance and also our, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, where allows for, as part of the document that you received, you did see a conditional rezoning agreement, which is signed by, between the applicant and also the mayor eventually, as it goes through the process at the end. And it, basically, it restricts the types of uses that, types of uses, proposed uses that would go into that zoning district. Okay, so we're not rezoning it to an M1 zoning classification to allow all types of uses. It's only based upon what those conditions were stipulated in that agreement. And as you remember, and as you know, we as a community, and we can't suggest any type of conditions. These are all conditions that are brought up by the applicant for our review. Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, Vern. And I do want to make a note on the agenda, it says ZMA 22-01, and in the recommended motions, it says 22-01. It should be corrected to show 22-03. So just for the record here. So to the screen, for your reference, the site is located at the dead end of West Lawrence. This will be outside the loop, west of downtown, south of, that would be Orchard Lake, and Bag, I believe that's Bagley. Yeah, Bagley. If you were to drive down West Lawrence, we did provide images of the property from Lawrence, westbound, you can see the building and the dead end where the street was closed previously. And then westbound, you can also see the site down the road from that direction. As mentioned, again, you can see on the screen, the zoning map to your right, the red arrow that points to the property, you can see that it does share that burgundy-ish color tone, which indicates the property is on, zoned corridor, commercial, or C3. And that is the district's design to provide for mixture of uses that are appropriate along thoroughfare and collector streets that have moderate to large traffic volumes. And they also support a wide range of uses that are appropriate within the context, including retail, service, commercial, office, and low-impact light industrial uses. The applicants are proposing CR with conditions, the M1 light manufacturing district, and you can see that on the screen as well. The arrow does point to it, it's, it now looks on the screen like a gray rectangle, which is reflective of the manufacturing zoning district. If you look a little to the bottom of that map, you also see some, some gray zoning. Those are other manufacturer parcels that are located a little further south along Jackson and further down Bagley. And then you can also see to the north of the parcel, more burgundy, which is that C3 corridor commercial district, to the north, to the south, and then you do have some R3 residential, or multifamily residential zoning adjacent to these properties. So as mentioned, they are proposing to rezone it from C3 to M1 light manufacturing, which is a district whose intent is to provide suitable locations for small to moderate sites and industrial uses. The district provides for manufacturing, manufacturing beyond single, simple assembly. The further intent is to encourage and facilitate the development of industrial enterprises in a setting conducive to public health and promote economic stability. When we look at the master plan, which as we talked about in previous meetings, that really provides the forward-looking context to also provide detail on the suitability of rezonings, the property is a future land use designation of mixed use, which shows up in our master plan several ways, but as it relates to this property, it is commercial and residential mixed use designation, used to create vibrant buildings, blocks, neighborhoods that have a variety of uses. Creating flexibility with ground floor uses is essential to the long-term sustainability of these areas. The building may include retail, personal services, offices, entertainment uses, and restaurant cafes. And if you do look at that future plan use map, you can see that parcel outlined by the red square rectangle. To the north and south, you have additional mixed use, future land use designations. And then the predominant yellow that you see on the screen is the traditional residential future designation. And if you kind of look at both maps, you can kind of see where those areas overlay, where you have commercial uses, and then also where you have those mixed use designations, you know, identified from the master plan. This use, or the conditional use, is a medical marijuana use or proposed for exclusive medical marijuana uses. We did pass a medical marijuana ordinance that does permit select uses inside overlay districts and outside overlay districts. Those districts, you can see on the larger screen to the right, you have the downtown district indicated in that green color towards the center. At the very top of the map, which may be slightly difficult to read, I apologize due to the color, but it is the yellow district, that is the Walton Boulevard overlay. And then to the northwest of the map, you see the blue, which indicates the Cesar Chavez overlay districts. And, and within those districts, these uses are permitted, the medical marijuana grower and processor, whereas they are not permitted outside the overlay. And you can see on the screen where the applicant is proposing to do the conditional rezoning, to allow those uses in context to the downtown district in itself. So you can see that the proposed site is outside that district. We did provide a technical report and staff findings also found in your packet. As mentioned, the applicant has proposed a conditional rezoning of the subject property to permit those medical marijuana uses exclusively, which would mean they would not be able to do any other uses. They can only do a medical marijuana grower or processor per the conditional rezoning agreement. The proposed rezoning does create what the ordinance identifies as a spot zone, or a manufacturing spot zone, which is a zoning classification that is inconsistent with those parcels around it. And just briefly for context, what that is, is that gray parcel that I mentioned, as you can see, it is not adjacent or surrounded by additional gray manufacturing as you can see, it is not adjacent or surrounded by additional gray manufacturing parcels. It's, it would be surrounded by C three corridor parcels, which would make it a spot zoning in the context of the surrounding C three districts. The subject site is located near the downtown medical overlay district. It is not inside of that district. The conditions for the rezoning would permit only medical marijuana grower and processing uses. The property to the west of the site is zoned R three residential or R three multifamily residential. And lastly, if the rezoning is approved, the rezoning would grant the use to the site, or it would grant the potential permissibility of the use to the site. However, the applicant would still have to acquire a special exemption permit from the city's, special exemption permit from the planning commission for that use, in addition to an approved site plan from the planning commission, as well as acquiring a license through the city clerk's office and going through that process. All of those things would, would also need to happen following the approval of a rezoning at the city council level. With all of our rezonings, there are several criteria, roughly ten criteria, that the zoning ordinance calls out that we must review to determine if a rezoning is consistent with the principles of the master plan. We looked at the consistency with the goals and policies of the master plan itself and sub-area plans, that's looking at its consistency with those future land use designations, which it is not consistent with that mixed use designation. So for that, we said it does not comply. Compatibility of the site's physical, geological, hydrological, and other environmental features, where the use is permitted in the proposed zoning district. And those we have not got into, so the applicant did not provide those kinds of details. Three, evidence that the applicant cannot receive reasonable return on the investment through developing the property with one or more of the uses permitted under the current zoning. And I apologize, those are actually flipped. Two should reflect it complies, and three should reflect that the applicant did not provide details for reasonable return on investment, so my apologies. Two, compatibility of sites' physical, geological, and hydrological uses, it does comply. Number three, evidence the applicant cannot reasonably receive a reasonable return, that information was not provided. Number four, compatibility of all of the potential uses allowed in the proposed zoning district while surrounding uses and zoning in the, I'm sorry, in the area of the land suitability impacts the environment. It does not comply with that criteria. Let's see, five, the capacity of the city's utilities and services are sufficient to accommodate the uses permitted in the requested district. It does comply with that criteria. The compatibility of the street system and safety, to safety and efficiently accommodate the expected traffic generated by uses permitted in the requested rezoning. We said it does not apply based on the dead end and the large uptick of potential employees and traffic that would be directed towards that dead end of that street. Whereas historically, that dead end did not exist, and traffic actually was able to travel from that side of Lawrence through a crossword and into downtown. So there was more of an open traffic system when that site was in its prime, so to say. The boundaries of the requested rezoning district are reasonable in relationship to the surrounding area and the construct, potential construction to the site will be able to meet the demands and regulations of the district. It does comply. Number eight, if a rezoning is appropriate, the requested zoning district is considered to be more appropriate from the city's perspective than another zoning district. It does comply. The M one or the manufacturing districts would be the only districts that could potentially support these proposed uses. So this would be the most appropriate request for zoning district change or designation. Nine, if the request is for a specific use, rezoning the land is considered to be more appropriate than amending the list of permitted or special land uses in the current district to allow the use. Those uses, as mentioned, medical marijuana grower and processing would not be appropriate to amend the C three district to allow those. So for that reason, this request does comply with that criteria. And finally, the requested rezoning will not create an isolated or incompatible zone in the neighborhood. And as I mentioned, it does not comply with that criteria. It would make a manufacturing or M one spot zone in that C three corridor makeup. And that concludes the presentation for ZMA two-two dash zero-two. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the petitioner here? Please approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. And if you would like to add to Donovan's presentation, feel free.
Thank you very much. My name is Fadi Nassar. My address is twelve fifty Latham, Birmingham. And just wanted to first thank the commission for their time. Want to thank the, the planning and zoning board for all the work they've done. Special thanks to Vern for really walking us through this process. But I want to say one thing. During this whole entire process, just going to the neighbors on Lawrence and, and getting to know a lot of the people that have properties or that live in Pontiac, I just want to say that the, the community support that we've reached for this project specifically was really, really encouraging. And you'll see in the, the blue packets that, that I delivered as I walked in, we have several different letters from, from just about every single neighbor that lives on Lawrence. I believe some of them are actually here today as well, in, in support of this project. So we're really proud of that, and we really are humbled by the, the community support that, that we've reached. So I wanted to start first by just giving an introduction of, of who I am and, and our company. And then I'm going to introduce our, our joint venture partner. So we've been real estate investors and developers for a couple of decades now. And I just want to highlight just the last five years of what we've done, just to exemplify that we're in a position where we can, we already own the project, the property rather, but we can see this project through. And this will be done with 100% private funding. So within the last five years, we've ground up, built over a million square feet of real estate, all in southeast Michigan. We've done that primarily with automotive and defense companies that we've either, again, built ground-up facilities for, usually starting at around 100,000 square feet. Or we've acquired, in, in some cases, dilapidated buildings, like the subject property we're discussing today. And we've invested millions of dollars into those buildings and leased those back to automotive and defense companies. We've also done multiple apartment projects, all the way from, from Detroit to Benton Harbor, to the tune of a couple of thousand units. So if, if you look at the, and I'm sorry, we didn't provide this on the slide, but if you look at the, the pamphlet that we provided, I just want to highlight a couple of the, the projects that we did again. So in, in Northville, there was a vacant parcel, six point six acres. We did a ground-up project for Tenneco Automotive. Tenneco is a publicly traded multinational company. I believe their market cap is about $12 billion. They signed a 15-year lease with us. Right adjacent to that, we did another project for Hella Automotive. Again, Hella is a publicly traded company. We did 141,000 square feet for them. We did another 300,000 square feet for Faresia. They're an automotive interiors group. We did that in Frazier. We did 177,000 square feet for AM General. They're a defense contractor. They build the Humvee for our military. So again, just wanted to point that out. And with that, I'd like to introduce.
I'm Noel Flockash, how are you? So I've been involved in cannabis now for close to about eight years. We, we started a company called True Center. You know, started in Hazel Park, went into Warren, did the same thing. And then also in Battle Creek, where we essentially worked with the city, the community, the administration, the council, and partnered up, helped them with their ordinances, picked up blighted buildings in Hazel Park. There are seven of them we've purchased and fully renovated, all new MEPs, and everywhere from cultivation to processing to retail. We actually opened up Oakland County's first rec dispensary in Hazel Park. We just opened up the state's first smoke lounge in Hazel Park too, called Outback Social. Our retail brand's called Breeze. In Warren, we just opened up the state's largest distribution center. It's 40,000 square feet. Our goal is to optimize the entire supply chain, helping the brands and the stores move product through the system a lot, a lot smoother, more efficient. In Emmett Township, actually, it's a Battle Creek address, but Emmett Township, we have a, a large outdoor farm. So we actually grow indoors and outdoors. And we also have a retail site there. So, you know, we've, we've been working with Fadi on other projects, traditional construction and, and other projects. This is our, our joint venture within the cannabis space and, and in the city of Pontiac that, you know, we're really excited to get involved in and make an investment. A lot of the, you know, what our company does is really integrate well with the city. I actually sit on the Promazone board in Hazel Park. I was dinner chair, we raised about $105,000 just in March. Actually Coco and her team from the Promazone in Pontiac was there. So she was really excited to see that happening. We look forward to getting involved with the Promazone here in Pontiac too. And, you know, we, we are very active in any of the initiatives of the city, whether it's the Art Council, you know, or the parks. We've been involved in a lot of their builds, brought over equipment and tools and people to kind of renovate some of the parks that we've had there. So, you know, we're, we're excited about this project. I think, you know, in terms of the economics of the investment, north of $10 million, in terms of jobs, we're, we're going to be instilling essentially, it's a very, you know, high-tech, advanced packaging equipment and also lab equipment. So we're excited to look at, you know, low-skilled labor all the way up to very high-skilled labor that, you know, we've, we currently employ in our other facilities too. So it's a wide range of opportunities. You know, we provide full benefits. I think our lowest paying wage is $18 an hour. But we have a program where we can have anybody that's never even been involved in cannabis, bring them through it, educate them, get them the skills they need, and, you know, put them on a career path where they can move either vertically or horizontally within the company in different areas. And, you know, we're producing, I think, about 12 different brands, all from RSO, which is very, you know, beneficial in the medical, for medical, some medical ailments, all the way through to inhalables and edibles and, and obviously flowers too. So, you know, we're growing pretty quickly. And we, we'd like to follow, you know, where we can find the workforce and train and, you know, expand our employee base, which is north of 350 employees at this point. And, you know, excited to work with the city and the community on this project.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. And then after the public, public hearing, we will go to the commissioners to get any questions or comments they have. If you're speaking for the public hearing, please keep your comments to two or three minutes. We'll gather all the questions, and at the very end of the public hearing, we'll get the answers from the petitioner or from the plant, planning department. So I will open the public hearing. Please approach the podium and just state your name and address for the record.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kenyatta Bowman. I am a lifelong resident of the city of Pontiac. Serve on the school board here. I live on Pike Street, just up the way from this proposed location. This building has been here all my life, clearly. When it used to be the Salvation Army, I purchased my longstanding teddy bear from there. I still have it to this day. But I think that will be great at the end of the day. That building has just been sitting there, rotting, serving no purpose. I don't believe, from my opinion, that it will cause traffic jams or any parking issues because he plans on to have parking off-site in a different area. So a lot of cars in and out and up and down that street. It's not really going to be much of a thing, but I do realize the trucks for delivery. But you have a whole street that currently just holds a bunch of mattresses and garbage bags and things like that. So if there is steady traffic down the street, I'm sure that the mattresses and garbage won't reside there anymore. So I, I think it's a positive thing, and I would, I would like to have something in the community that provides jobs. Again, that the more jobs that we have in the community, the more people who wants to purchase homes and live here and have something to do. So I think it'll be a great addition to our community just to help clean up the area and provide something that the people voted for a while ago. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, mister. Laurie Bishop, I live at the end of the street, and I wanted to just show some support. I actually have both sides three, so I'll be right in and out there. And I absolutely have no problem with what they're doing, especially because they're going to be parking things elsewhere. And the building definitely needs to be kept up. And something going on there and some activity there would be wonderful. The spot zoning, I don't think that's any problem considering that it's mostly all surrounded by commercial stuff. The R three designation for this one little strip that's close to it is pretty much a couple of larger abandoned buildings and one smaller home that Mr. Gay lives in and the larger home that I live in. So I don't think we have any problems with spot zoning. And I don't know if anybody's seen the building, but architecturally, it's amazing. And it's a very, very open building with huge turrets. It would be really built for something like this. And structurally is hard to do much with. I was friends with David, who was trying to sell it. And I've watched him walk many people through there before you purchased it. And it was a hard building to sell because it was structured so openly. I have a picture of it to show anybody if they haven't seen what an open space it is. But it's designed very well for this, I think. And I hope you all consider it very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Bass. I'm the director of Assistant District Council in District One. I live at 499 Highland, that's on the south end of Pontiac. We, the Assistant District Council is mostly concerned with economic development, redevelopment, and new development. And the reason I came up to speak is because I was not familiar with this until today. But after speaking with the owner, as well as speaking with Vern on a number of concerns, I became comfortable with the condition part. I, I don't see any problem with the rezoning because of the condition part that's put in there. That's what made me comfortable. That's what made me comfortable with it. But, uh, as the owner described what they were planning to do, how they were planning to do it, the way that the traffic would be directed, I didn't see any real ma- met matter that would cause for any, uh, non-compliance issues with that rezoning of, uh, light manufacturing. And I liked the way that the struc- the structure. So, with that, I, I think we'll feel very comfortable if this was rezoned. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Just wanted to add one more thing. I was, I mentioned the overlay areas. I never really, this doesn't really, uh, it's not, I think a lot of people wanted to not have them in the communities, and I don't think this really applies. So, I think for as far as it being against the overlay area, I think it really kind of would fall in the category of fine.
Hello. My name is Ho Kwong Andrew Foo at, uh, one thirty West Lawrence Street. Um, I recently bought the place, um, and we closed on April eighteenth, uh, of twenty twenty-two. And, uh, just the past, you know, two weeks, uh, being in the area, trying to, you know, turn the place around, I believe, uh, my property is the mention, aforementioned, uh, R3 zoning property, right next to the old, uh, the old building. Um, what I've seen so far is just a lot of neglect in the area. I mean, trash, rubbish, mattresses, uh, uh, you know, old furniture just dumped in the back street. Uh, we got, you know, just trash all over the place. And, um, uh, I, you know, I just spoke with Fadi today, and, you know, we're talking about how the project's gonna impact our surrounding community, and, uh, I think it would be really beneficial, um, especially for, you know, those of us on West Lawrence, to at least have some activity. Uh, and beneficial activity, um, that's gonna generate economic, uh, return for the city, for the people, new jobs, uh, investments. Because right now, there's just, uh, a dead end, trash everywhere, you know, um, people breaking windows in the old Salvation Army building, right? I'm right next door, so, you know, I kind of see these changes. They boarded it up. Um, but, uh, it would be really good to see some activity, um, and not just, you know, neglect. And, uh, yeah, I, you know, I, I work in real estate, you know, for a living as well. And, uh, you know, usually, you know, if somebody, you know, if they're willing to, you know, spend millions and millions in capex, capital improvements, capital expenditures, uh, you know, that's, that's gonna drive demand for the whole city, for the whole street. Uh, so, you know, I think that's gonna be beneficial, um, for, for the street. I can't speak for everyone on the street, but at least, uh, for, for me, um, as the property owner right adjacent to them, I, I think, uh, I like this idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any further public comments? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comments. It didn't seem as though there were any questions, so I'll just continue to... Commissioner Duval, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I, I have a couple of questions. Actually, uh, one concern and a couple, and a question. Um, I wrote notes here about your track record. Do I need? I know, I wrote notes here about your track record as it relates to other communities. Um, and you mentioned... Hi. And you mentioned that you, um, have been engaged with the Promis Zone and the Arts Commission, and you've been talking about renovating parks. I would like to see something a little more targeted. Um, and, and just an indication of your investment as a neighbor, you know, just a good neighbor in the community to, um... I, I would just like to see something a little more specific, and so...
Yeah, I mean, uh, i- if you'd like, um, we, you can talk directly to Ed Klobuchar, the city manager, or any of the council people. Um, I'm kind of drawing a, like, I don't wanna say draw a blank, but I definitely have some stuff that I could share with you. So, um, Scout Park in the city of Hazel Park, um, got a grant from the Sutar Sutarak Fund, and it was about three hundred thousand dollars, but it was very strict, and it's only being used for, uh, 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 equipment and for the engineering firm. All the actual labor had to be done by volunteers and by the city. So, um, we rallied together. It was a one-week build, but it took about four weeks to plan. We were involved from, from step one till the end. Um, for the entire week, I had three crews there every single day, putting roofs together, putting equipment together. I dropped a shipping container full of tools that was there to be used, and then also provided tools, and then also locked the tools up at night. Um, a week before, Tom from DPW called me, said, "There's no way I'm gonna be able to grade this property. I'm, I'm stuck. I don't know what to do." We sent over bulldozers and caterpillars. One of my partners was operating one while we were doing everything we could. So, we were there for an entire week. We, we hit it in rain and shine and everything. We built that park in seven days. Um, and it's beautiful. Um, in terms of the Promis Zone, um, I've been a board member for five years now. Um, I sit on the board with Ed Klobuchar, with, uh, Dr. Trupi, the superintendent of schools. Um, so not only do we focus on the students, it's mentorship, um, not just money, it's mentorship, it's programs, it's, um, um, internships. Um, so we're definitely, you know, working very closely in terms of, like, you know, mentoring these kids through, you know, what's going on in this world. Um, with Dr. Trupi, I've worked with her multiple times Thanksgiving. Um, we, we provided five hundred turkey dinners. We provided them to the community at the, uh, school on Ford Elementary. Um, I personally had to go pick up eleven pallets, uh, with a rented truck because the company that was supposed to deliver it, their truck broke down. I drove all the way to Livonia, picked everything up, brought it over. I had my entire team there. We had police, fire, council, all there, um, giving away five hundred turkey dinners. Um, and, and, and that was in collaboration with not just cannabis companies, but, um, other companies in the area, the supermarkets, um, the stores, the gas stations. We all worked together on that. Um, Arts Council, we've been sponsors for the last, I think, six or seven years. So, we're actually now with the Hot Box Social that we just opened. That's their new home. So, they're holding all their meetings there on a regular basis. We just had a fundraiser there for Mike McCall, who's running for state rep. He's one of the council people. Actually, was there when he was appointed to council and then eventually was elected, um, uh, down the line. And, uh, actually, he was elected, then he was re-elected. Sorry. Uh, uh, there was another council person that was appointed. That's Luke Londo. So, but yeah, so I, I guess, um, in terms of things that happened kind of catastrophically, you know, when COVID hit, a lot of the restaurants in the area were pretty much, you know, screwed. So, I instilled a program where I, you know, we were essential. Um, my employees were essential. I had cards made and letters made for them to be able to drive around and come into work. Um, we can't just let the plants die, you know? We had, also, we're able to retail. There was a lot of anxiety and stress going on. So, it was definitely, um, I think, a benefit to be able to have access to safe cannabis at that time. Uh, but what we did is I put a program together where, um, I basically paid for lunch for all my employees, but I made them have to get food from all the local restaurants, um, in order to support them through this hard time and through that hard time. And, um, you know, we continue to do that. So, we, uh, you know, I, uh, my security, all of them are CERT reserves. They're all CERT reserves in Hazel Park, uh, the Community Emergency Response Teams. So, they get trained. They're uniform reserves. So, if the city ever needs, you know, if there's a, a fair or, you know, a parade or anything like that, I think I've got fifteen CERT reserves that literally are on my payroll, that I paid for to have them go and volunteer. Um, in the city of Warren, there, there's about thirteen programs that we are regularly involved with, um, over there, too. Uh, things as simple as butterfly weigh stations, all the way up to, you know, um, you know, junior officer programs.
I get, I get that. I get that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I mean, and that's great for Hazel Park and all those other places, but I, I'd like to see something about Pontiac.
I totally agree, and I'm willing to sit here and work with, you know, everyone. I think my first step would be to get integrated with the Hazel Park Promise. You know, I, so Ellen Lipton, who was, uh, Senator, um, sits on the board with me, but she's also involved at the main, um, Promis Zone program. So, a lot of the things that we're doing, we're implementing it across the eleven or twelve Promis Zones across the state, um, starting CRMs and technology. I have an IT background, so we've built a lot of this infrastructure for them. But I would say we'd start there and then really come to the community and see where the gaps are. And, you know, can we displace funding that can be used elsewhere if we can get involved in some of these other projects and things like that? I think right off the bat, I could tell you, the street being blighted with mattress and trash and all that, what we've seen, just by putting in our cameras and having our twenty-four-hour security on-site and lighting and everything else that we do, um, that doesn't occur anymore. Actually, we, we, we hand USB keys over to the police station all the time for people that have their cars broken into, or "This happened over here," or "Maybe it was an accident," or "Maybe it was some type of a criminal activity." So, um, we've actually lowered the crime in the areas that we actually have our facilities in. So, I'm excited to see what that street will look like, you know, once we're actually active there, you know? And, uh, and we, and, and, you know, we don't have to be asked to do things. I mean, I think if we're in a position to, to do, um, you know, to do something to better that street or the neighborhood in that area or just the overall community, we're, we're very active in all aspects of it.
Great. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
And, and my next question is, I don't know if it's for you or Fadi. Um, you, you mentioned that you have currently three hundred and fifty employees. How many do you anticipate here at this location?
So, um, this facility's gonna have a lot of automation, a lot of high-tech. So, it, it's probably looking at somewhere around fifty-ish people per shift. We be running three shifts a day. Um, and, you know, I, I think, depending on, you know, how much more automation and skills we have and different things going on, that could flex here and there. But I think overall, between the, the employees that physically at the facility, it'll probably closer to a hundred fifty to two hundred, but then there's an infrastructure that supports that. So, you know, you're talking about accountants and, you know, this, that, and everything else that comes with that. But I think just pure, straight hiring, like, you know, right off the bat, we're, we're gonna have to hold job fairs. We're gonna have to integrate with all the different resources in the city to be able to attract and, and retain, you know, these employees. One of the biggest things that I've seen is, in the cities that were in Hazel Park and Warren, is we have employees that maybe we sniped from out of state or even from out of the city, and they're buying homes now or renting homes or buying homes in the city and now living there and riding their bikes to work. And, you know, one of the suggestions that I have for that team that was here is, what we're working on at Hazel Park, is they're making branded bike, um, bike things, but they're going to the businesses and saying, "Who's gonna buy one?" Pre, pre-buying them, allocating them, placing orders. So, like, when you talk about quick things that you can do, I think you have to have the businesses in the area in that conversation, because I think a lot of them are willing to do it if you're able to present them with ways to do it. I think a lot of the times, it's like trying to figure out ways to do it, but if it's just there on a silver platter, I think you have a lot of businesses that'll get involved and say, "I'm in, I'm in, I'm in." You know, "We got a hundred of these things. We were already prepaid. Maybe there's a little bit of money that gets made for the city in the entire process, you know, to use in other things," but you get my point. Like, I think there's a lot of creative ideas once, once you set out a table and, you know, kind of, kind of brainstorm.
Yeah. So, the reason I was asking about the employees is because we have a lot of, um, opportunities to give to our citizens here in Pontiac as well. So, I'd like to, I would love to see that them have that opportunity at your location.
One hundred percent, and, you know, uh, yeah, we, we will want to host everything here. So, it's not like we're gonna say, "Hey, come to Hazel Park or Warren or Troy," whatever, to do these things. Like, it's all gonna be done here. So, we obviously wanna hire Hazel Park first. We tap into the schools, tap into some of the other, you know, adult programs, skill trades programs, and try to see if we can actually funnel in graduates and whatnot to, you know, to work with us. So, uh, we're really excited. Uh, we have a great employer, we have great benefits. We provide health, dental, vision. Um, there's quarterly bonuses. I mean, we really, you know, we really do it up. And, and got great customer ser- I mean, great employee feedback, too, so, yeah.
Good. Commissioner McGees, do you have any comments or questions?
Good evening. Thank you for being here, and thank you for considering Pontiac. Uh, this property is very awkward, and that's not your fault. Uh, it is in part the fault of the people of Pontiac, because they were tired of having to wait for the train all the time on Huron and other roads. Um, but, so it definitely created a very, um, a very destabilizing experience for this particular parcel on West Lawrence. Uh, so it's, it's been vacant for some time, uh, but really that grade separation that was done nearly twenty-two years ago made for, put this question to us as a city in terms of what becomes of this stretch and specifically this parcel, because it, there'd be a lot of different options if Lawrence still was contiguous, was still, you know, more integrated with the downtown scape, uh, streetscape, which it was historically. It would, it would have been much more contiguous with the commercial and civic uses of the greater downtown. Um, one question for the staff. Has it been measured how many feet away it is from All Saints Episcopal Church, which, full disclosure, is the congregation I attend? But in some of the material I reviewed, it sees that, uh, some of this operation would have to be at least five hundred feet away from a, a active congregation, and I just was curious if it clears that threshold.
It did clear that threshold based upon the way our ordinance reads in regards to our medical marijuana, in regards, it, it, as, as if, remember, this has been a little, a little bit ago when we had this conversation, but it basically is, you take the primary residence, uh, point, uh, perpendicular to the center line of the roadway, and when you go out to Lawrence and then down the other streets, you're beyond that. And also, uh, we actually, in the application and information you received, was about that, uh, R3 zoning next door, that first resident that was zoned residential. It was over three hundred and fifty feet, which was required to be two hundred and fifty feet. So, yes, well beyond those, that threshold.
Understood. I'm, I'm really grateful that the residents nearby provided feedback in writing and in person, because I would have, at first glance, would have assumed that there'd be some consternation from nearby residents about what it might mean for traffic or, or just, uh, complications with the, the framework of their neighborhood. Uh, West Lawrence deserves love. Uh, literally, the pavement itself needs love as well. I mean, in, in part because it's a, a dead end, it's getting, um, it's short shrift in terms of resources and attention from us, the city of Pontiac. So, that's something that, on a broader level, that we'll work to address for all parts of our city, but it's absolutely true for that. I'm curious if Clinton Street, the street just north, um, if there is access to the properties on these parcels from Clinton? And does it require work for that to be done, or is there some configuration already that makes that very turnkey option?
Um, that's a great question, and this building is extremely unique, to your point, and it's partly why we selected this building for this particular project. To answer your question specifically, the, the building is sixty thousand square feet, as you know. The first floor is thirty-five thousand feet, and the second floor is twenty-five thousand feet. And interestingly enough, when you enter from Lawrence, you're on the first floor. Um, when you enter from Clinton, you're on the second floor.
Wow.
And, um, actually, Clinton, um, and, and I think, um, we can get some confirmation on that, is in much better shape than, than Lawrence. So, um, access to, to either is, is accessible, is, is doable, rather.
So, for, let's say, what's the anticipated truck utilization for your facility? And does that, you, very unique, that's fascinating, very unique Clinton Road access on the second floor, is that feasible for you, or are you gonna try and shoehorn giant trucks down the road that's got cars parked on either side, full of potholes, facing the dead end?
Just to be clear, we, we don't use any large trucks. So, safety transporters all use spinner vans. So, at most, you'll see a twelve-foot spinner van.
Okay.
Now, even in terms of packaging, um, we have a central non-THC warehouse, so all the big semi-trucks go there. And when we need things done at any of our facilities in terms of delivered, we use the spinner vans, too. So, we found them to be way more efficient. We put one or two pallets in them, get what we need over there. Um, I think maybe, you know, during construction, you know, they're gonna have a cement trunk here or this, that, or whatever come through, but I think once it's operational, um, I don't foresee, like, massive trucks coming up and down the street in any way. Um, that, that's not any, at any of our facilities, other than our non-THC warehouse, which is in a, in an area that, that welcomes that, you know, with sunken bays and things like that.
Is that your Warren location or your Emmett Township?
Warren. Warren. Yeah.
And what are the square feet of those other facilities?
Warren is forty thousand square feet. Um, we have a facility, we have a cultivation facility in Hazel Park that's five thousand square feet. We have an extraction facility that's ten thousand square feet. We have a, um, manufacturing facility that's another four thousand square feet. Our retail, there's, we just expanded it to seven thousand square feet. Um, our smoke lounge, three thousand. Our Emmett Township facilities are four thousand indoor, about, um, thirty acres outdoor. And then we also have a retail on-site there that's about twenty-two hundred square feet.
Are you the owner occupant for any of those facilities, or are they?
We own all the real estate, free and clear. We have no debt. We're all self-funded. Um, and we've, um, essentially completely updated everything. Our first, our, our oldest renovation is two thousand nineteen. Like, everything's up to code from two thousand nineteen on. Um, so most of our buildings that we're working on today just got CFO this year or late last year, too. So, everything's updated. We come in, we gut it, everything gets updated. We don't wanna take any chances. So, life, safety, you know, MEPs, code, all that is, is fully updated.
So, what's before us makes a reference to parking off-site is the anticipation that there'd be shuttles for employees? Or what would that look like, the practical application of that?
So, initially, we were, we were thinking that we were gonna, um, have a lot more employees. Um, but due to some automation, we think that we've got that number down to about fifty. And, um, I actually have something that I can, uh, a visual that I can share with you. But there, there's literally a parking lot right across the street, which we have, there's a letter in your, in your folders from the owner of one-one-two Pike, um, which is the building directly across the street from us. So, we have full access, um, to that parking lot, which, uh, which houses about fifty cars. So we have full access to that parking lot, which houses about 50 cars.
And as he's getting the microphone, I'll let my commission colleagues know, I did reach out to some of the Hazel Park City Council members whose names was invoked and it checked out. They confirmed that what he shared in terms of their community engagement, it was their experience. Since I knew some of the Hazel Park City Council thought I'd ask.
Good.
Yeah, actually, I believe that in your packet, you should have received this graphic.
This is a little bit updated, Vern?
Oh.
And can anybody see this?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
So obviously, this is the building here. This is the 50-car parking lot right across the street. And this here actually showed our contingency plan if we were going to have 200 employees, which is no longer the case.
All would have, but not all at one time.
Not all at one time, right. We were going to have 200 per shift. Now it's 200 in total. This is, as you know, the Phoenix parking deck. So what we were going to do is we were going to shuttle, we have an arrangement with the Phoenix leasehold interest party, and we were going to shuttle to and from our facility here. The other thing that I think is important is the arrangement that we have with 112 Pike. This parking lot right here, right off of Pike Street, actually comes right to the dead end of Lawrence Street. And they've given us access in writing to actually drive and have our employees drive right back here as opposed to driving down Lawrence Street. So we did that to accommodate for one of the, one of the conditions that planning presented.
Thank you. To the city, who owns the parcel immediately along Huron, north of Clinton?
Really?
From William Street to the train separation? So private ownership, not city-held?
No, it's actually MDOT.
MDOT has a slice?
Yeah, the cul-de-sac at the end is actually owned by the state of Michigan.
The land is owned by Mark Thomas?
It's a combination of Mark Thomas, MDOT, and the railroad themselves, the grand trunk.
But where the cul-de-sac is located is on MDOT's property, if that's what you're asking.
That's helpful, yes. I was just curious, what, you know, when we're deciding, you know, is this sort of comply or does not comply based around what's surrounding it? It's helpful to look prospectively about what may be in that space, which has been dormant since, for quite some time. Although historically, there was once an octagon house there, the Dunlap Home, who had carriage makers, a beautiful old structure that was over there, but gone.
And you wouldn't know that how.
Well, yes. Beautiful, beautiful photos from that. So it's, I'm hopeful that that stretch can be activated for the benefit of the community. And so we want to make planning decisions knowing comprehensively what we're doing that has implications. I mean, honestly, because of the train grade separation that is next to it, I am looking at it through a different lens because it's, it is literally buttressed and shoehorned in to what, it limits a lot of what planning possibilities may be. And it's worth, it's worth us looking at through that lens. I may have other questions, but just for the sake of allowing other planning commissioners, I want to stop monopolizing. But I'm grateful for staff and future applicants for us to be creative about parking and not say that something has to have a sea of concrete around it and that's the only viable plan that we have. And I think that our city compared to some other cities is already moving in that direction of being more versatile and being able to look at things creatively. And the fact that there is a very large, underutilized parking option that could have been leveraged, I welcome that kind of creative thinking for future applications as well.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I think I have some comments and maybe a couple of questions, but.